I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate, and justice for all. Alright, today is Thursday, February 15th. This is the planning board meeting in the town of Whitman, which is being recorded to be on YouTube and the public access channel. Uh, tonight in attendance is myself, Adam Somerville, Chairman.
Elaine Burdron, Co-Chief.
Brendan Griffin, Clerk.
Wayne Andrew, Mr. President.
Bob Kimball, Mr. President.
Alright, tonight, the only thing on our agenda is the MBTA overlay district. I'll open up to anyone who has any comments or would like to note anything.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I think they did a pretty good job of incorporating what we asked. Uh, there's a couple of my uh, medical errors and I've got one question that I think needs to be clarified.
Alright.
Under mixed use, market rating unit, they have all mixed use, which should be deleted.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, we totally eliminate mixed use.
Okay, under B, permanent accessory use, they have two twos, two twos, so two should be eliminated. Under 240 dash 16.6, again, mixed use should be uh, eliminated. Just gonna check on that. Okay, under um, H, exterior lighting, they have luminaries shall not be tilted. Uh, you don't understand what that means?
Illuminaries?
Illuminaries, I'm sorry.
What do they mean by tilted?
It's like a, like a cult of academics.
No landing zones.
No, so I don't know if that's a, what it is. Uh, they said, uh, under D, pedestrian lighting, said the fixtures shall be 10 feet tall. Uh, we had a comment last week about uh,
12.
12 feet, I think it should probably be 12 feet, at maximum.
Maybe, so it's not dunkable?
Dunkable.
I remember that, let's say on that one.
Under 24, 16.9, it just says rules and regulations, I think it should say board rules and regulations.
Okay.
They're talking about the board above.
It should be regulations plural, which is, it isn't.
Okay, regulations plural.
Alright.
So those are the comments, and my question is, um, subdividing of lots, it's um, 240, 16.6, it seems to be one.
This is a re-coming?
Yeah, it's a re-coming.
I just don't want to look through it, because I don't have, I couldn't print it out.
It says developments not should be segregated according to the article. I find that a bit confusing. Uh, I think I understand what they're trying to say is they don't want the um, houses to be segregated so that uh, somebody can sub- subordinate the uh, the bylaw here. But um, you know, there's 36 months, uh, it's an overlay district, and people are under the overlay district, subdividing their property. If I subdivide my property now, say I'm T and K, then it's subdivided now into two passes. Somebody comes along, two years later, they sell it to a developer. Is that considered within the 36 months, or it's just very confusing to me?
The uh, the way that I read this is, pretty much, it's kind of a safe build-in to say, you can't subdivide X land once X land is set. But there is a piece of it that's confusing, and it's the 10. So you can just subdivide it nine times? That's...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I can respond to that. I think the intent of this is so that people don't um, build in phases to avoid the affordability requirement for 20 more units. So, response to Brendan's comment, I think that 10 or more units should be 20.
Okay.
I think that's, they didn't incorporate the intent that we had last time of making it 20, which is in A, so. Uh, but, no, I was saying, I agree, it's still confusing to read, and I'm, I guess I'd ask them to take a, because it's not just divisions of land, it should really be, even if you just have one plot of land, and you build 19 units on it, and then a year later, you build three. You shouldn't be able to do that and avoid the affordable housing, even if you don't subdivide the land.
Yes, say it on the same plot of land.
Yeah, yeah, so.
There's loopholes.
Yeah, I guess I would just ask you to take, take another, I'm, there's plenty of examples of this kind of thing in other town bylaws that have affordable housing requirements, so, I don't, uh.
I found it in Braintree's actually, too.
Yeah.
But it's, of course, it's not interpreted, so.
Yeah.
Hello, Cathy.
Hello, sorry, I'm a wrap.
It's all good, it's okay.
I've drunk down.
Well, sorry, sir.
So at a minimum, that should be 20 rather than 10.
Okay.
And then, uh, it still isn't, to me, it's, it's still leaving, it's still leaving loopholes here.
Yeah, there you go, garden.
I don't have. A little copy of this down, we gotta bring it to Melissa, so that she can email Judy instantly tomorrow, so they can have this done, or approve on it as a method, if that works when we get to that one.
It starts out with, with an imperative, and then it, it just says, developments shall not be segmented to avoid compliance with Article 16, period. And then there's just this weird runoff.
It's kind of an explanation of, you know, if we, if we, if we stopped it there, that would be even more confusing. I think you gotta have something to say what you mean, but this doesn't quite do it.
Is this something where you could put through the way it is and have that altered with by the bylaw committee, since this is just a draft anyway? Just the wording, when it gets to the wording part?
It's not finalized till this town meeting, so potentially you can flag this as something the bylaw study committee.
To, to, just to reword?
But I think more likely, they're probably gonna kick it back to you guys for the hearing.
Okay.
And that's where some work can get done.
Okay.
And I, and I think saying lots or units is very confusing.
Right.
Units make sense to me, lots or units doesn't.
Yeah.
It's not, they're not, it's two completely different things.
Yeah, I think you're right, I think the,
Yeah, that does make sense.
Lots or ought to be crossed out at a minimum.
That's, that's what I think, to just say dwelling units, that's where I would, but again, I'm not a lawyer, you know?
For you guys, there's a, affordable housing requirement over 20 units.
Okay.
There's language here to prevent subdividing lots to build 15 units here, 15 units there, to get around that.
Really, right?
And we're just in that, the explanation of what um, segments to avoid compliance is.
So I don't think I did get a copy of the um, does anyone know who it went to, or obviously it went to?
Melissa sent them out to us.
Okay, I.
On Saturday, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
No, I just don't have, my printer's not working.
Yeah, that's fine.
Two hits and copy, did it break everything down?
This is a copy of the red line that she sent.
Oh.
And we're talking about uh, 240, 16.6. Paragraph D.
Is there any other comments on it? So basically, we're gonna, right, right now, we're changing from the 10 to 20 and crossing out all of lots of dwelling, or dwelling. Just sort of, just to cross that out, so it's just units. Is there anything else we should change, or how do we want to word it? Is that, or should it just be totally reworded?
If she could explain, Melissa could just, in her email, explain that, the divisions of land doesn't quite capture it, because what if the developments on one parcel of land?
Right.
And if she could, if Judy could just tinker with that wording, again, I'm sure plenty of other towns have,
There's other options.
Have similar provisions and.
Do, do we all agree that all that language is problematic, and that the, the part that says units is the part that should be?
Yeah.
I mean, the part that says lots?
Yes.
Lots is the one that should go?
I totally.
Yeah.
Lots or.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I said at the beginning, verbiage is not my thing, so, but I understand exactly what you're saying, and it's just the rewriting of it is. Wayne?
We will propose, I go to question on the level.
Okay.
So on that sentence, we're proposing increase of 20 or more dwelling units above the number of existing 36.
Increase of 20 units, dropping out totally on more lots of dwelling.
No, you, you need the or more.
You need more.
On more, okay, so just leaving out lots of dwellings.
Lots or.
Lots or units, not dwellings.
No, dwelling units is.
Dwelling units, okay.
Just the words lots and or.
Okay, more dwelling units, okay, I got it. 20 or more dwelling units.
Right.
Okay, okay, I got it now. Alright, so put question mark on it. Is, is there anything else into that section?
No, we can get a clarification of that.
Yeah.
You know, when does it go to the uh, um, bylaw study committee?
So I think the process is, you guys send it to the board of selectmen, the selectmen send it to the bylaw study committee, and maybe simultaneously request a public hearing from you, so that we can stay on track.
Okay.
Um, because that's gotta post and advertise a certain number of times.
Right.
When do you get a vote?
So we have a meeting Tuesday.
This Tuesday?
This Tuesday.
Okay.
And I think Melissa's timeline was pretty tight.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, yeah, that's, I know that's why we're here tonight, so.
Right, so I think our proposed public hearing, did I put it in here yet? No.
I think she said April 4th.
April 2nd or 9th, maybe?
Does it have to go to town council?
It will, yeah, but that's, we'll probably run it by town council before the,
I think it was.
With the bylaw study committee, April 7th?
Second.
Second, that makes sense.
So we're gonna pretty much put this through for you guys to vote on, just as long as the tinkering is done by the meeting?
Yeah, if you've got little things that, like, reviewed down, I think that's a reasonable thing to flag. But if the intent, the bylaw is pretty much here.
Right, it's just a couple of words and just a few.
Typos, that kind of stuff, yeah.
Is anybody else have something else, another section?
If you give us a few minutes, I,
No problem, I'm just asking out, just as we go.
Wayne's got a question.
I've just got a question on this uh, uh, section 16, 7, the next section.
Okay.
Uh, C, 3. It says all developments shall provide accessible walkways connecting building entrances to building entrances, buildings to street, and buildings to sidewalks, that sounds very confusing. It's like they're saying the same thing twice, connecting building entrances to building entrances.
And they're basically telling you that any entrance to a building has to be connected by a sidewalk, does someone read that?
If there are two buildings with a sidewalk between,
Two buildings, just, just.
Running from the entrance of one building to the entrance of the other.
It sounds confusing when you first read it, but it makes sense when I read it again.
I've read it five times and it's still a little bit, it's still interesting.
I understand what it meant. Alright, I have a question, a second, there's an awful lot of buildings and streets up there.
So maybe all provide accessible walkways connecting buildings to um, adjoining building entrances, building streets, and building sidewalks.
Connecting buildings should be connected to each other's streets and sidewalks. Sounds a lot easier to me, right?
No, but I think it's just a little confusing now, but now being the devil's advocate.
I'm gonna go to the same place you are, I think.
I've got four buildings on this side with a parking lot, and I've got four buildings on the other side of the parking lot. Do I, do I need a sidewalk around to the eight buildings?
I would say you'd have to have a sidewalk around the parking lot to each building. Well, at least if there's a horseshoe lot, and your building's here and here, you have to have a sidewalk.
And I think you'd be covered by buildings to streets, and then that street would connect the other buildings. You'd have it continuously paved to.
Paved, paved.
Yeah, wallow place.
Maybe you could just put the word all between connecting and building entrances the first time. Connecting all building entrances to building entrances adjacent to public features.
That's um.
Yeah, that sounds better. I was gonna say, what if it's one building, multiple entrances?
Yeah.
If you got a large enough.
Just try to be a little more specific, so.
Then you'd want sidewalks.
Yeah, you'd want sidewalks.
Around the building.
Alright.
So do you, did you come up with any, is, is this like going back to Judy to incorporate?
Yes.
So, you gotta try to come up with wording to tell her exactly how you want it?
Exactly, yeah, that's what I'm trying, yeah, that's what I'm, that's what we're trying to do. But we can, like I said, we can still boil this, so we can go to town, go to them to vote, the general.
The gist of it.
The gist, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
And then we can uh,
She ought to be able to.
Get the final verbiage by town meeting.
Yeah.
Or for special meeting.
This kind of stuff, she might be able to get done.
Exactly.
Right, you might be able to get done by Monday morning.
Okay, so if we take this, all developments shall provide accessible walkways connecting all building entrances, stop. Buildings to streets, buildings to sidewalks.
Yeah, true.
And that kind of.
Yeah. That works.
Yeah.
Building entrances, period, building to streets and buildings to sidewalks, just two separate lines.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Take out the second building entrance.
All building entrances, come on.
All building.
Yeah.
All buildings to streets.
So finally, the all developments shall provide accessible walkways connecting building entrances, period.
No, all building.
All building.
All building entrances.
All building, that's a little, all, all building entrances, period, buildings to streets and buildings to sidewalks. Uh, it sounds good, that sounds good.
Mr. Chairman?
John, yes, sir.
On the next page, uh, sub-paragraph 6, benches for seating shall be provided near retail entrances.
We have mixed use.
Yeah, so that should just be deleted, right?
Yep.
Okay.
And then all the other ones gotta get moved up to seven become six?
Yeah, yeah.
Alright. Moving on.
Well, I found one more, um.
Mixed use.
In D, 3.
Yeah.
Shall not be located not within, it should be within, minimum.
Surface parking shall be located for rear side of principal buildings and shall not be located within, yeah.
So delete that, no.
That's a double negative.
Yeah.
So that actually makes it right. Well, double negative makes it a positive, so that actually is right, it's just not proper English. Yeah, went to high school. So, yes.
Uh, number, number 5, and D, 5. It's, it's under multi-family or mixed-use buildings, so cross out or mixed-use.
Multi-family, well, yeah, I'll leave you this, thank you. Yeah, because you got your other little corrections in there, too. I get a copy of everything, if you want.
She's gonna have time to change this and.
Yeah, I think he had this done by, for you, for, by Tuesday.
So when you just average, go through thickens and tight, they should be able to.
As long as, as long as we've got something to get to Melissa, and not just the recording, I think she had it.
Yeah, yeah, we'll give, give up. Did anybody else see anything else moving on down the line? I know, I know, we're all meeting as we go, too.
Right.
Just stopping us asking, so just to keep dead air, I guess.
I thought I had seen somewhere that um, they were talking about the light bulbs being 18 feet.
That's in the parking lot itself.
Oh.
So if it's in a parking lot, then 18 feet, that's, sometimes it's put them up, it's quite tiny, these lights. 18 feet is high, but it's not a hallway. And if we can make sure that they don't illuminate the other lots, then.
Is that so much, so uh, that's fine?
It's on the section 2, 18 feet.
You're pretty good with stuff on the way, huh? Yeah, here's the 10 for you, you said the 12.
Yeah. I get it, I get it.
Yep, I'm just trying to do, you know, people that are still up to date, too.
I think the luminary shall not be tilted is to avoid shining on other.
No, it should be, well, they shouldn't be tilted.
They should be, I mean, should face down.
What is a luminaire, is that something attached to the side of the building?
Not necessarily. Maybe it should be tilted down.
I don't understand why that's even there at all.
What is a luminaire, anybody?
Right, what's the matter with the lights of, that are gonna be pointed?
You want it to shine on the lots, is the.
Right, and I think that's not, yeah.
There's enough.
Or facing the street, too, that they don't want that straight L-B.
Right.
But there's so much already in this section, I think you could eliminate those words, and it wouldn't make any difference, and then we wouldn't have to, explain to town meeting what a luminaire is.
That's what I mean, if we could just eliminate luminary shall not be tilted, what's, what, that's what I'm saying, what's the difference? It depends on how, depends on the lighting that's being used.
Yeah, well.
I agree with that.
Unless they're using that word in place of something that's not.
If that's the case, then we'll get some clarification.
How would they should make it more user-friendly?
You know, we might have to tilt the light for, depending on where they are, I don't know. Makes sense, right? There's the 18 feet you said, for the parking lots.
Okay, I have a comment, when you get to 16.8.
Six, what, no, I'm glad.
Uh, D.
Previous page, they just passed that. B, surface and ground.
D, no, D, criteria for conditional approval, I raised this at the last meeting with Judy, that I didn't like the, everything that says, provided that the board's conditions do not unduly restrict opportunities for housing development by adding unreasonable costs or by unreasonably impairing the economic feasibility, that.
What are you talking about?
Uh, D, subsection D, under 16.8, criteria for conditional approval.
Okay.
I just think there should be a period after, to mitigate any extraordinary adverse impacts to development on nearby properties, period.
Period.
I just don't like that, that last section, that just.
And then cap, the, yeah, the start of the sentence?
No, I would just delete, delete the rest of that paragraph, that provided that.
Direct the rest of the paragraph.
Yep.
Everything after 16.
Yeah.
After nearby properties.
Yep.
Was that the one that she strongly suggested stay in?
I don't remember her.
I don't recall being discussed.
I don't think she did that, you tell me, but I.
There's a few things she said, I don't remember exactly, I don't remember if this is.
Yeah, I, I just think that's, this is gonna set us up for lawsuits by a developer.
Why'd I have to pay that for this, or whatnot? I get it.
It, it's a chapter 40B, you, you see that kind of provision in a 40B regulation, where it makes sense, that's what the law says.
This is supposed to be something different than that.
I don't think it makes sense here.
Are you okay? Well, you're the board that goes, gets the site plan approval, so that's, that falls right under you, where then, you know, they had the rights there.
It's pretty conditional and ambiguous at the same time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Because everything else before that, I mean, if you go back, if you go back and look at C, decision criteria, it says the board shall approve a proposed site plan where it finds that. So if they meet all these requirements, we have to approve it, and that, that needs to stay in there. But this doesn't need to be there.
Alright. Anything else? I know you're still skimming, John, just.
Still skimming.
Taking up your time. It's not a problem. Just as a possible, can you get upstairs to the mailbox, I can put this right in Melissa's mailbox, and she can drive in the morning?
Yes.
So I say, just so you can get it ASAP, you know?
Okay, I have one for 16.11A, this is just a typo. Down towards the bottom, it says, the board issue a written decision to approve or deny the minor changes in the last sentence.
Board issue a written decision.
It should be the board shall issue a written.
Shall issue.
Yeah.
Alright.
And actually, says provide a copy to the applicant for filing with the town clerk. The applicant shouldn't be the one to file it, we, the board should file it.
Okay.
You know, so, uh, provide a copy to the applicant, and fi- and file it with the town clerk.
Alright, so and file instead of file filing.
And, and file it, so, so it'd read, the board shall issue a written decision to approve or deny the minor changes, and provide a copy to the applicant, and file it with the town clerk.
Got it.
I'd put a comma after minor changes, I think that'd be clearer.
Alright. Elaine, did you have anything like that, or, can you, you saw?
At the moment.
Okay. Wayne? Bob, anything else?
I'm good as well.
Whoops, one more.
Oh, oh, John's not good.
Very last end of B.
Back to your head, John.
New application for site plan approval under 240, 16.10 should be.
16.10, hold on, just let me flip over.
Yeah. No, it's, it's in section, it's the very last line of the thing, 16.11B, she's just got a wrong numerical reference there.
Should be 16.12A, right?
Where is the application for site plan approval?
Where are you, how, John, again?
Very last.
Very last words.
Oh, okay, yeah.
But what is the uh,
Is it 16.8? I see a design block for cities, or is it another?
16, 7 is development. Cera provision, actually.
16 dash 8.
I think that's the one.
16.11.
7.
Site plan approval proceed to 16.8?
Yeah.
So the last, I mean, those last words should be 16.8? Yep, move on.
Because, I mean, I'm reading this like it's referencing the prior section here.
Yeah.
So.
There you see, there.
Sixteen ten is the.
Appeals, yeah.
I mean, I don't, I mean sixteen seven is development standards, is that really?
Well, it should be referencing the laws, rules, and regulations.
Well, it definitely shouldn't be the excessive appeals.
No.
That doesn't make sense.
Section eight.
New application for site plan.
It's just basically telling them to appeal the superior court, yeah.
I mean, there's nothing in here that really exactly says, it's, it isn't a section called site plan approval, it's.
It should have been.
Sixteen point eight is M C O D site plan approval procedures.
That might be the most, uh.
The most logical? It's better than appeals.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's either eight or seven is all the criteria that should apply, the, all the instructions.
Well, you made that call, John, because it's your.
Well, prob, I mean, probably eight would at least be.
It may, that, eight makes sense to me.
Yeah, at least, say we think it should be eight, ask Judy to.
Yep.
What, what she intended, because that's just because she, some of section got eliminated, and it didn't get renumbered.
There's some that were, yeah, there were some that were renumbered that night, too.
Yeah.
So maybe that could be.
Yeah. That's alright.
Clever question, she talked about providing a map, has she done so?
Yes, she's gonna do just a supplemental map of the area.
Yep.
Not the, for the zoning map. That being said.
Yes.
We need to redo the zoning map sometime.
Yeah, yes. And it should be a little bit bigger.
Oh, yeah, I can print it any size I want.
No, but if, no, it should be put somewhere so people can see it.
Yeah, but.
Anyone can see it.
But it's gotta be, well, we've got the overlay district now for the marijuana.
Yep.
We've got the overlay district for the, uh, uh, out here, mixed-use out here.
Yep.
We've got this overlay district, um, so.
Is there no calling plan that does the mapping on that?
I don't know, sure, the problem is, I don't think, if we had a digital map, this would be easy, but.
Yeah, it really needs to be like a G I S, yeah, it's tied to the, to the lots, and if it's a hundred feet back from the street, you need to, you know, measure that.
Yeah.
You've got that map, it's on the website.
The G I S map, does the zoning districts in it?
I think it does.
I think it does.
Yes.
Yeah.
Which one?
We've, we've got the G I S map on the website, I think it has the zoning districts in it.
Oh, it's a layer.
Yeah, it's a layer.
Yeah.
Turn on and off.
I don't know, sure, okay, it could be.
We'd have to have something printed.
We should have it written, anyway.
So people can see exactly where we're going, what we're doing.
Yeah.
But I know she did mention that, so.
Justin, um, when you send this, and presumably the motion or the article to town council.
Yeah.
Ask them whether we need to have, the article's gonna have to reference both the bylaw and the map in some fashion, whether it's within one article, or do you need two articles, or whatever.
Yeah, lucky for us, a hundred and ninety towns are going through this, so.
Right.
Yeah.
And how many of that are to approve?
Well, I mean, this is more just a.
But, yeah, for our, our.
Your town council, because it's, any, any zoning bylaw amendment might have that situation anyway, so they should be able to tell it, yeah.
Definitely did it for the marijuana one.
That's right, we had that same situation.
Yeah.
So we're like to make a motion to send this to the selectmen as amended?
I will make a motion.
A motion by Brendan, second by Wayne, all on table?
Yes.
Aye. Alright, unanimous. Is there anything else? Is there something you do for yourself?
No, I'm just.
Okay, I just wanna make sure, that's all?
Just. It was upstairs with Kathy, she reminded me of this guy.
Nope, new face, forget all that, just make sure.
It's John Galvin, oh, do I, you're already.
Yes, yes. Aye, do you want to have any edits? Melissa's not here tonight, so. Motion adjourned?
Yep.
Alright. Meeting adjourned?
Alright.
Yep.
Thank you, I appreciate everyone's help on this, Justin, John, thank you very much.